Sorry, we're late, everyone. Welcome to this September 23 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabana?
Please stand for your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of August 26 and September 12.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
With revisions, right?
With revisions, yeah.
Yes.
That John identified, yeah. Stand for it.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigsscales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. It's time for our student liaison report. We're going to welcome our new liaisons, Saniya Danny and Darlene Phyllis. Welcome. We're glad to have you onboard. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Just a little introduction. Hi, my name is Saniya Doni. I'm a junior here at the high school. I participate in a lot of activities and just to name a few track, ROTC. I'm a Mountaineer mentor and among other things, I'm an AP scholar.
My name is Darlene Phyllis. I'm a senior at the high school, just like Saniya. I'm also an ROTC cadet. I served on the, I served on the Nakheel Badlani Foundation as its president. I'm a mentor as well and a part of the varsity girls tennis team.
We just wanted to bring upon like some updates from last year. We knew that there was GPS tracking that we, that was allotted from the budget last year for the buses and we just wanted to ask like how it was being installed and how it was being like followed upon. What will this app like have, like what capabilities will it have for the students as well as the parents and who will be able to use it?
The next item on our report, we've begun surveying our student body. Our first concern was busing, so creating updates and feedback on students and their experience with the buses. We began with paper ballots and have also begun to use electronic forms to collect feedback on that. We are still in the initial phases, but we've also began to collect feedback on overall concerns and comments from students. We are still in the initial stages, but we've noticed some trends of what the students are interested in and we'd love to share that at the next meeting.
Another thing that we wanted to improve upon is as Board of Ed Liaisons for the entire district, we wanted to be more representative of the middle school population because as they are going to become the new incoming high schoolers and maybe even the new incoming Board of Ed Liaisons, we wanted to get their position on certain things that the board proposes for the students and we wanted to be more representative of how like their positions are on new procedures or things that may be implemented by the board.
Yes, as Saniya said, we want to get a more direct and clear voice of not just the student body at the high school, but to include the middle schoolers as well. In addition, another update about the high school specifically, we led our Green Ribbon Week, which was a success, working with the Grassroots Community Foundation, we were able to launch a commitment to mental health. We had a yoga day outside that was attended by students and this is just a reminder of our commitment to not just the students' voices, but their wellness as a whole.
Another thing that we did as a student body was we, many students and clubs and activities and participated in this, the annual, the ninth annual Nakheel Walk and Run. Some organizations that participated were the Mountaineer Mentors and the ROTC group that participated. The Mountaineer Mentors actually won the most participants from a single team and we raised, I think, close to $45,000 for the Nakheel Foundation. Those are just a few things that the student body has participated in and helped like impact our community and we just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do you want to hit on the GPS?
Sure.
And anything else?
Sure. Like to welcome our student liaisons. We've had an opportunity to chat on a couple of occasions and meet outstanding young folks and we're happy to have you up here and look forward to working with you. Yeah, so just an update on the GPS. So we have installed the Zonar devices on all of the district buses and working with our vendors to do the same with theirs. We have all the high school student IDs we purchased to equip them with the chip or that's necessary for it to function with the Zonar device and we're currently in the process of planning for a pilot at the high school for later in the year, once we've had an opportunity to coordinate those details. Basically, the capacity that it gives above and beyond what we have currently, which is that the transportation office can track the exact location of where buses are. What this will add is an additional capacity for us to know when students have gotten on, if they've gotten on, and when they've gotten off, where they got on and where they got off. Okay, so in the event that we were missing a student or something of that nature, we'd be able to know whether they got on the bus at all, when they got off, where they got off. So that's essentially the capacity and we look forward to working with our student liaisons to kind of help plan that out a little bit and foresee any challenges we might encounter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Yep, Dan.
I'd like to add my welcome, but I also have a question. Did you get a copy of the student liaison policy from the board?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure you have that. I'm glad to hear about yoga day. I know last year, a few parents came to the microphone and board members mentioned it as well. We talked about mindfulness. We haven't come to that as yet with our new superintendent, so I'm glad to hear about the yoga day and maybe mindfulness is another thing that we can look at this year. Dr. Cascone, thank you.
Yes, and Ms. Mordecai, I mentioned mindfulness at our last board meeting and talked to Dr. Cascone because that's extremely important for adults. It's important for everyone to be in the moment and I too just want to welcome you two young people. It just, I'm just sitting here beaming. You're just so bright and we are thrilled to have you join us this year and we certainly look forward to your insights because you know what's happening. We think we know what's happening. You know.
Maybe we should do mindfulness for the district next time. Last year, we had a school board session where all the board members participated in mindfulness and we came back to the board, so maybe we should do that as a board.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Just welcome. I've had the pleasure of, I actually met, known you for years, met both of you before at ROTC and aware that you're already superstars and I look forward to seeing you on the track as well.
Thank you, Senator.
Improving that time every year, but welcome and thank you for your insights. Thank you for the work you did coming into your first day and we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to welcome both of you. I've seen you guys working hard all summer since I have the girls working out on the track and you guys are running on the track and at the tennis court, so you guys are definitely a great addition to have, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Cascone, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Just before I get into the formal items that are noted on the agenda, I just want to touch on a couple of things. We've had a busy start to school by much of the feedback that we've received from various groups of stakeholders. It's been a very positive and smooth opening to the school. A number of folks have said to me that this is the smoothest opening they've seen in years, so that is very pleasing to me as a superintendent because ultimately that's what I'm trying to accomplish, is create an environment that's smooth and efficient for our staff and our students. I had an opportunity to attend a number of back-to-school nights, two elementary back-to-school nights and both middle school back-to-school nights. The buildings looked amazing, a lot of great parent turnout. We had some students that were there serving as volunteers to give tours and it really just filled me with a lot of pride to see all that coming together for, you know, to start the school year off. Obviously, the fall sports season is in full swing, a lot of great stuff going on there, too much to really mention, though I have to give a shout out to the boys soccer team that won 2-1 in overtime. That was pretty exciting. And our band, our band had a banner weekend, in fact. They participated in two competitions, one at Scotch Plains and one in Jefferson, and they took first in both. So, big round of applause for our band, fantastic job. You know, this was, I had a great Saturday up here in West Orange, kind of ducked out from my, you know, my family time and came up here and was just amazed by our PTAs at work. There were several PTA events that were going on. We had two car washes, I was able to make it to the Gregory Car Wash and the Hazel Carnival. Just again, to our PTAs, thank you. Amazingly hardworking folks, you know, and doing what they can to raise money for our schools, so it was really nice to visit those events. And I also had the honor of attending the Hispanic Heritage Foundation, West Orange Hispanic Heritage Foundation's flag raising ceremony. It was a really nice event. We got treated to some amazing dance and music and it was just great to be there with our town partners and acknowledging that month and acknowledging, you know, our Latino brothers and sisters, hermanos, hermanas, in our town and the diversity of our great country. Just a note, high school back-to-school night is this Thursday. That promises to be a great event. Now, switching over to kind of more the facility side, which will be a good segue when we invite Mr. Ziggy up here to do his presentation on the summer projects. You will notice that on the agenda tonight, there is a proposed facilities evaluation on which the board will be voting. And this facilities evaluation was proposed and determined after a comprehensive analysis and evaluation by Mr. Ziggy himself in terms of what had already been done in the way of evaluations, as well as taking stock of what evaluations had been performed, both through the previous ESIP project, as well as the previous work that was done by the architects. And so what that did was it ensured that there is not redundancy in this additional evaluation that's being conducted and as was explained last time, so that we can really be operating from an informed and comprehensive perspective to deliberate on what is necessary for referendum. So just to clarify that again, and that will be voted on tonight by the board. An update on the air structure. Very pleased to let you know that we were able to successfully negotiate through the conflict that existed between the manufacturer of the bubble and the contractors and that work is moving forward and we are on target for delivery of the lockers, I believe, by mid-October and that facility should be fully operational within several weeks, so we're pleased that that's been moved forward. Just moving on to the formal part of the agenda as far as district goals, the district, the process of setting our district goals really started when, you know, I came into district and was listening to various groups of stakeholders about perceptions and needs. We, as a public work session with the board, we developed some rough ideas for district goals. Through our leadership team meeting over the summer, we kind of further thresh those out and the goals that appear on the agenda is really the end result of that work and there are five of them. And not to read them verbatim, but they connect to communication, perception, student achievement and access, social, emotional well-being and learning for students, and then the generation of additional revenue. And all of them will be SMART goals in that we will utilize surveys and things of that nature, pre and post, to determine the extent to which we've achieved those. So excited to get started on those and a lot of great work to come. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Alper to talk a little bit about the same process that was followed for the board goals. Mr. Alper?
Sure. Very similar. I think we actually started in the same workshop meeting. We did district goals and board goals alongside our representative from the New Jersey School Boards Association, Charlene Peterson, who you would have seen here in another meeting where we further teased them out and discussed them and came up with really, you know, what we thought they needed to be. So we're going to vote on ours tonight, board goals, and the three of them concern our work with policies, our work with data, the quality and quantity of it that we receive and work with, a PR plan, and a fourth one that's not on the agenda, but that we'll read out when we get to it, on just professional development for the board as an ongoing process. So we're excited to get that underway. You know, board goals are optional, I think, and come out of the board, they come out of the board evaluation process, but it's one of those things that you really look for in a school board, that you're focused and working together on common goals.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. And so just a quick preamble to Mr. Ziggy. You know, as I toured the buildings this summer and I was, became aware and Mr. Ziggy and his staff showed me the projects that they were doing, I thought it was really important that at this board meeting, that Mr. Ziggy had an opportunity to present to the board and the public all the work that his staff, the projects that his staff got done this summer. When you see it, I think you'll be amazed at how much was done in such a short period of time. Mr. Ziggy? Ford, if you'll join me in the audience.
Good evening, everyone. I don't get this opportunity very often to thank my staff without the buildings, grounds, people who are behind me. I facilitate trying to get all this work done in a short period of time in the 10 weeks that we have. Many people think we have 10 months, but it's only 10 weeks, so what we get done is amazing. Mike Hanley, who's our operations foreman, and Kathleen McCormick keep our office together. Every one of our head custodians, custodial supervisors, maintenance and custodians do a fabulous job. In their best interest of the staff and students are always in the forefront to keep everything going. So the presentation, I put together about 50 slides, I could put 500 together, but it just gives you a flavor of what goes on in the district and what we've done with the monies that are available to us. In the high school, room 2301, we renovated this room. We cut the classroom in half and put an office in the back space there. There's the office from one side. It's a learning area, that's the coach's office there, and then a learning area for the students on the other side. Air conditioning ventilated properly so that that room could be self-sufficient. Roof replacements, we did over the 4300 wing where we had quite a bit of problems with leaking ceiling tiles and so forth. That has now been abated, so that's behind us with a new roof. This is one of the foam insulation roofs that we started with the ESIP program and are continuing now with all of our roof repairs and any roof replacements in the future. You can see from another angle, that lower roof was done, half of that roof was ripped off with the wind. We got that part of the roof replaced. That was the capital money that we had this year to do some roofs and electrical upgrades. Trailers, finally, the trailers are gone, at least in two schools. Hey, big, big project there. The Redwood School now has a larger parking lot. We're looking into developing that into an area where we can move the traffic a little bit better for the students when they drop off in the morning and they pick up in the afternoon. So there's the parking lot from the entrance angle and then the back kiss-and-go lane, we were able to do this year without expending capital funding. We had a contractor that was able to do it, part of our upgrades to our asphalt and concrete. We spent about $125,000 district-wide on all of our asphalt and concrete repairs. That's about been the average of the last 10 years. And there's the opposite side where we come out and we'll go out onto the side street there. Okay? There's another area where we put, this is going to be where the Gaga pit that's down in the back, in the back playground area, which we don't use that often because it's on the grass, is going to be moved up to the front there and the kids are going to be able to play in a consolidated area where they have other playground equipment there. So, I'll show you that picture. Restroom partitions, we've been doing these over the years. We were able to get some money this year to do Redwood and St. Cloud, so you can see the big difference in the stalls that are put in the bathroom, really spruces up the bathroom and again, gets rid of those metal partitions that weren't so good. Okay? Some fence replacements that we did. Being a good neighbor, we removed some trees there that were ready to fall on our cars and into our neighbor's side lot there, so we did some fence repairs. Some drainage and asphalt, this was a lot of the work that we did with our asphalt and concrete. The drains, when they start to collapse, we get them rebuilt and then we put the asphalt finish around them. This is where we had a flood again in Kelly School, not as bad as we had years ago when we put up our floodgate in the back, but we found that because of the torrential rain, the waters came in to that area. Let me back here, back in the area. I guess you can't see it with the point there. There's a point there. Right here, we added this drain here and we added this wall and we put a canopy over the top. Now the water can't go in through the back entrance. Mother Nature finds its way. We fixed the one side with the floodgate several years ago, so now we have it all protected, so that won't happen again where we flood out our basement at Kelly. Some of the carpeting, we were able to get 24 rooms this year, a little over $100,000 that we spent in carpeting and floor tile replacements in the district. Liberty, we finally finished up the rest of the bleachers. It took us three years to get them all done, but you can see now there, there are no broken benches and when people sit, they're comfortable. Okay? The retaining wall at Mal Pleasant, we started out with a small portion down at the end. This is another three-year project and we now hopefully have our frozen sidewalks resolved for the future. Okay? So it did work. We wanted to do a small portion. It did succeed where it went down into the drain and under the stone and so we came up about another 125 feet, so I think we've got it solved until it goes further up, so we'll see. Again, some asphalt for where the kids used to play on the grass, now they could play on asphalt with the playground equipment. We added air conditioning in the kitchen at St. Cloud, one of the last kitchens that we had to add, so the kitchen staff are very happy now and they can cook and supply the food in a pleasant atmosphere. Again, some overlays and again, this is what we do. We can't afford to do complete driveways, so we do portions at a time that in worst-case scenarios and we end up with large patched areas with, which serve the purpose. As you can see in the front there, that was done last year and that was done the year before, so in three years, we ended up getting the entire driveway done. St. Cloud, we ended up having to replace parts of the boiler system. This is the condensate return tank, that's the holding tank. The heat exchanger sprung a leak last year and we replaced the air dryers. That project was $90,000 just to do that work. So it's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that everybody doesn't see, but it's essential in keeping our buildings warm and keeping the boiler system functional. Okay? Another part of the roof, the second roof replacement was done at St. Cloud. This was over the kitchen area and the hallways where we had extensive leaks and that roof was replaced also with the foam roofing. Again, some more partitions in St. Cloud School. The back stairs at St. Cloud that were refinished, that were falling apart. And the parents are the driving forces behind a lot of these things that they say need to be, get done, so we put them on the agenda and we get the money for it and we get it done. There, Gregory School, trailers are gone. Hooray, there's two. Okay, so that open field and what we did was the walkway, the original walkway is down the left side here, comes down the steps, goes down and goes in the front. We had a walkway that came up this way, as you know, around the trailers. We decided to make the walkway to the left side and move the asphalt, remove the asphalt so that the field now can be extended. So when the grass grows in, as you can see, it's already growing after several weeks and we get some rain, hopefully, we'll be able to get a nice finished field there so the kids can expand for their play area. I guess in the future, we could talk about expanding the playground or moving it, relocating, so we'll be talking with the PTAs to help us with that. Again, grass areas, we did a lot of the areas that were not part of the, we had a very good contractor on this, right to the last minute, they got it done, but they did a lot of areas that were not where the trailers were and they did areas and seeded and put the straw bales over the top. Okay, some of the floors, we went to this LVT tile now that doesn't need wax. It's been a very, very good product, our second year using it, so like I said, 24 rooms were done this year with the flooring, as you could see. Some of the concrete work, you see the wider patches, those are concrete replacements that we do. We're going to be filling in a lot of the areas with some topsoil in the fall and we'll clean up those areas so the walkway is safe and passable. Fire alarm system, we replaced the entire fire alarm system at Hazel School. We try to do one a year, another $40,000 project, but we replaced the entire system, which include all the heat detectors and smoke detectors in the building, all the pull stations, and the system is complete now. So now we have an updated programmable system so that when the fire alarm does go off or the fire department has to come in, they know exactly where the trouble spot is because now they all are addressable. As you can see, the number on there, the number at the top there, 133, that is on the panel, they know exactly where it's at. So our whole goal is to get the entire district that way. Okay? Bus garage, we have an office renovation. All these renovations were done with our in-house staff, very, very talented maintenance staff that we have. We don't need to go with outside contractors, so we save a lot of money. We get the best bang for our buck and we're able to do these inclusive of the windows and everything, even the doors. The flooring is done by an outside contractor, but you can see, this was our biggest project. This took us six weeks, most of the summer. We did four classrooms, well, actually five classrooms down in the basement of Washington. As you can see on top, those, we actually ripped out all the walls and then restudded them. We thought we had a mold problem, but when we ripped it all out, we had no mold problem. We had all paneling in those classrooms and when we pulled it off, we found that there wasn't mold, but again, basements lend itself to moisture and so we refinished. So as you can see at the bottom, you can see the difference in the classroom. Everything is newly sheet rocked. Okay? You can see the old on top, okay, and the new on the bottom. Okay, this is B7, this is our one room downstairs and you can see the difference at the bottom down there. Tremendous difference. It also helped with our little rodent friends that come in. We found a lot of holes behind the walls that we couldn't get to because of furniture. That was all ripped out, so we're in constant IPM mode in trying to get our little friends outside and keep the students happy inside. Playground repairs and upgrades, we're constant with that. We have an inspection that comes, inspection company that comes in each year and you can see the mulch that was put down and all the repairs that are done for each of our playgrounds. And that's the presentation. Thank you. I'll be here to answer any questions, so I'll stay around.
All right. Ms. Trigsscales, do you want to start off?
Thank you, Mr. Ziggy and your phenomenal staff. When you talk about the fact that your maintenance crew has done a lot of this work, that's very impressive. I come from a dad who worked for the NORT Board of Ed. He was foreman of the painters, so I kind of have a thing about facilities and so I'm very impressed. And I know the drainage issue at Mount Pleasant and Gregory and Kelly, I know those principals and parents and students are just thrilled that that's been taken care of. The 24 floors, tell me a little bit more about the composite, what's used for that? You said it was something new?
The VCT, which is vinyl composite tile, we now moved into the realm of LVT, which is a pre-finished tile that does not need to be stripped or waxed.
Wow.
So that saves us a lot of time, especially toward the end of the summer, when you have to have the floors drying time with the onset of the floor installation. We save a couple of days there where we can move the furniture in. We don't have to worry about burnishing because the wax needs to be a little bit hardened so that our furniture doesn't stick to it, so it's a time saver that way. And in the future, we're hoping that we don't have to wax or spend stripper and the time to strip those floors, so it's a time saver there.
So you said that the ultimate goal would be to replace all of the classroom floors throughout the district?
Yes, all the classroom floors as we go along, as they need to be replaced. This is going to be our product. We tried it for two years now. It seems to work very well. The custodians like it, so that's the way we're going to go. So that's a saver for us. A little bit more expensive than the VCT, about 10% more, but it's worth it in the long run because we're going to save in the maintenance down the line.
I'm always curious to see how, well, I guess we don't use salt now on our sidewalks. We use whatever we use.
The magnesium, yeah.
Right, right. How that interacts with the new floors. I've seen some really odd chemical reactions.
That's for sure, yes.
On new floors and, what'd you say, magnesium?
Magnesium fluoride, that's what we use right now. So we don't use the salt anymore, that's friendly to the grass, friendly to the interior, doesn't create the chemical hazards that does. So, and we had good experience with those.
Ms. Mordecai.
Hi, Mr. Ziggy. Thank you for that very impressive presentation, and thank you to your team. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to piggyback on one of Ms. Triggscale's comment about the floor. You mentioned that in the long run, it will save us money. Is this a part of your sustainability green school training?
Yes.
Thank you for that. We're hoping to bring back the Sustainability Committee. He was one of the many administrators that took that five-day program. So I'm happy to hear that it's animal, grass, plant-friendly and everything. That's good. I'm a little amazed that there's anything that needs to be fixed in Liberty. It's our newest school. What is it, 12, 13 years old?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering why there's anything that needs to be fixed. I'm expecting always to hear our older schools that are 75 or 100 years old, but never Liberty.
Well, again, we keep up during the year. We did just this summer, 686 work orders district-wide, and quite a few work orders were done. And again, it's upkeep, it's maintenance, nothing new that we have to do there because the building is relatively new since 2005, so nothing major there.
Yeah, thank you. That's a lot of work, 686. For the high school roof replacement, you mentioned the 4300 wing ceiling tiles. This was done under ESIP. There should be a guarantee.
Not that section. That section was never done.
Not the 4300 wing?
Nope, we ran out of money there. So there was one section of the roof that wasn't done, and that was the one.
Okay. In your presentation, I'm pretty sure you said it was done by, it was done by the ESIP.
Alluded to the fact that the foam roofs were started with the ESIP, and we continued with the foam roofs.
Okay, so this wasn't one of the ESIP roofs?
Correct, correct.
Because I was going to say, there should be a guarantee.
But it was the foam roofs that we used based on the concept that we employed at that time.
Okay. The Redwood Kiss and Go Lane, thank you for that. I know several years ago, we had a tragedy in that school district, in that Allen School area, so that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Good job.
Thanks.
Ms. Robertson?
Just thank you and your team for all your hard work, and I'm very happy to see that the retaining wall at Mount Pleasant is up, and we're, you know, we cross our fingers on the ice this winter and hope we don't have the same problem again, but it looks beautiful, and I appreciate all the hard work. I'm just curious, and kind of piggybacking on one of the things that Ms. Mordecai said, what are some of the other green approaches that we're taking as we do our renovations?
Anything that's non-chemicals that we're using. We've gone for years now, it's probably our 10th year going green with chemicals. All our cleaning products, we stay away from stripper. We only use stripper, and I hand that out very sparingly on our more difficult floors and the wider floors to get them clean. So we try to stay away from there. Our waxes are all biodegradable and are user-friendly or environmentally-friendly. So from there, even our road salt, we try to keep away from the grass areas and do a good job with that. So those are some of the, the paints are all non-toxic paints now. There's no odors, very low grade VOCs, or almost zero. So again, you know, those are all the things we're trying to do, always thinking of things to do. Went to fiber mops instead of the cloth mops now, so those have been a tremendous help for us. We launder them all. All of our schools have, it's almost like a laundry mat, they have a washing machine, and then the guys dry them out, so we buy them detergent, and we save a lot of money there because we don't have to rebuy them again. So all those thoughts of doing things, you know, to save money and also to be green.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Ms. Merklinger?
I just want to thank you and your team. They're some of the nicest people I've ever run into in my runs and work around town, so thank you to all of them and yourself as well for that.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see the trailer's gone from Gregory because I have fond memories of playing in that huge field, so I'm glad the kids will have that open space again. Just a real quick question with the roof repairs at the high school and at St. Cloud. I know that's something we've talked about with the architects. Are there any further plans for additional roofing to be done with this foam?
Only if they, we can't get it done with the architects, then we'll have to try to plan to do some more. We do have some more roofs that need to be done. What I didn't show here, it's still on the agenda, the rest of the capital money, we're going to be doing some electrical upgrades at the high school. One of the areas in the PVW, the whole electrical room is going to be redone. All those federal breakers are going to be taken out of there, and we're probably not, probably a little late in doing it, but we haven't had any disasters now. Those circuit breakers need to be exercised, and they haven't, so we're probably getting started at the end of October, the beginning of November. We had asked the contractor to give us some better pricing, and he was able to do that by moving the project from the summer to the late fall, early winter. So we're going to do that over the winter time, probably late October, early November, and we saved about $10,000 by doing that. So, you know, we'll get that electrical upgrade plus some distribution panels, so we're not going to have redundancy with the electrical, with the engineers. We'll be able to get the high school completely upgraded for electrical distribution, which is a positive.
And so just to follow up on that, you said that's the Plaza Byway Gym, correct?
What's that?
The PVW gym?
PVW Electrical Closet and upgrades there, yeah. Not the gym, not the gym. The gym is okay right now. We have electrical, the distribution there is fine. It's other areas of the building that we need better distribution.
Thank you.
Liaison?
I just wanted to thank you and say thank you for your hard work that you guys have put into the school district, like improving the schools for all the students, and for your initiatives to go green. I just had one question. I know in previous years, the Washington School, elementary school, has had a retainer wall that has been broken, similar to the one at Mount Pleasant. I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, was not put in the budget for last year, for this year, I guess, but are there any plans to put in the budget for this year going into next year?
We keep moving along in that direction, and our overall plan with the architects will address that, so hopefully we're going to be part of that future plan, yes. All right, thank you.
No further questions.
Great. Mr. Ziggy, thank you. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziggy. Appreciate that. There is actually no HIV report. Happy to report that we do not have any HIBs to date in September.
Wow. That may be a non-summer first. That's excellent. All right. Questions from the public on agenda items. If you have a question or comment on anything that's on the agenda, come on up. You'll have three minutes. Just let us know your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close that portion out. And may I have a motion for personnel, items one through six?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Just, uh...
I'll take a...
Yes.
No, you could. Just want to say thank you for the 22 years of service to Janine Aldrich, and wow, it's a long time. And just thank you for your contribution and enjoy retirement.
Absolutely. All right. Mr. Calabana?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggscales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, and abstaining from Dave Joyceal under Personnel, transfers item number five, letter A.
And President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Next up, curriculum and instruction, items one through 10. Reminder on item one to abstain for your own reimbursement, or for your own approval, rather. May I have a motion for one to 10?
I'll motion. I'll motion.
I'll second, and abstaining of course.
When we get to it. Any discussion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table item number seven and eight, as I have requested further information on those items. Would appreciate a second. These two items, we had discussed in December and again in January, and then in April during the budget process. I would like to know why it again appears on this agenda and would like sufficient backup before I'm comfortable in voting for it. So if this could be table till the next meeting, which is October 7th, I'd appreciate that.
Mrs. Mordecai, if I might just, we have Ms. DeMendez here. Perhaps we could ask her, she might have the answers to those questions?
Sure.
Could we do that, Ms. DeMendez?
That would be good. Hi, good evening. Last year, we began our work with professional development in the area of ELA in order to respond to the feedback of our staff. Our staff had completed various surveys through our listening sessions. They asked us for support with professional development specifically around Readers and Writers Workshop. The ask was not just to go to workshops outside of district or one-day workshops, but to have a consultant actually come in, come into the classrooms, model, have the opportunity to observe that modeling with peers, and then debrief, and then work through the professional learning that way. Last year, we began that work with our consultant and received some additional feedback on next steps, things that they would like to see expanded upon, et cetera. So this would be a year two part of that goal. Specifically this year, we are going to focus on professional development around unpacking our units of study as a resource. Just for clarification point, we have curriculum in ELA that's developed. We have curriculum that we're revising, and the units of study are just supplementary. So when the teachers go to unpack those units of study, they're really going to look at what teaching points will they pull from the units of study. They'll see those models in those classrooms, and then they'll be able to debrief around them. The reason that's very important is because we don't want the teachers to attempt to just use the units of study as a curriculum or from A to B to C to D as if it is the curriculum, right? We want them to be able to just pull out those teaching points, pull out mini lessons, pull out mentor texts, pull out those things that are priority for the students. A second area of focus would be really looking at small group instruction. So what does your data say? You've been using Fuentes and Pennel, you've been using MAP, you've been using the NJSLA assessments. You now know what your students can and can't do. You are giving formative assessment in your classroom. So now how do you use that data to pull small group instruction and really meet the individual student needs with very specific strategies and interventions? Another area that we'd like to focus on is conferring with students in the reading and writing workshop through the professional development. So what that means is, as the teachers are walking around the classroom and they're pulling up alongside of a student, and they're sitting down with the student to confer, asking questions, how are you approaching this reading? How are you taking notes? Or how are you processing the comprehension? Or what areas are you struggling with? And they're asking the questions about the ELA aligned to the standards. And so then that's conferring, and we need professional development in that area. Also, with the professional development will be provided to our reading specialists. We have reading specialists in our district. They are very, very trained and experts in being able to provide services specific to the reading needs of the students, and we are going to layer on top of that coaching. And so then our consultant will assist us with preparing our reading specialists with the ability that they have to really identify the needs of the students in the area of reading and the strategies. That's something that unique that they bring to our team. Now, how do they help support our teachers with that? How do they take that and translate it into really working with teachers and modeling with them and supporting them? They do this, and we just want to expand upon that. Another area is as we begin to revise our curriculum this year to really look at grammar, which is our focus, a priority area. We want to look at our resources, make sure that they're representative of our students, not only as a window, but a mirror, right? We want to make sure we're looking at both ends when we're aligning all of our resources to all of our new state mandates, and we're making sure that we are representing all of our student body, that we're representing all of our student body well, that there's no implicit bias, that there is no discrimination or misrepresentation of any of our community groups. So we're going to be looking through our curriculum for all of those things. These PD sessions that are here, they are different days. I think it's 27 or 28 days, and the reason is because it's going to take place in each school. We're not pulling the teachers out. That's another priority of ours, not to pull the teachers out for all of their PDs. Some teachers will be pulled out for some, but here, we're going to go into the different schools and develop lab sites. So it will be a classroom that is working through the professional development, teachers observing in their homeschool setting, and it's familiar to them, and they'll be able to really benefit. So that's the focus of the professional development plan for the consultant. We do have action plans for that, so we can forward those to you, Ms. Mordecai, and to the rest of the board with very specific objectives for each of the things that I've mentioned, and action plan with activities, next steps, and measurable outcomes. What are we expecting to see at the end of this?
Okay. So, okay, so my question, well, I have questions in regard to what you've just said, but I also want to add on. We approved this December 11th, 2018, and we spent $24,700 through Title 1A, Title 2A, and Title 4A. And then again, we re-approved it on the January 28th meeting. And then during our budget process, when I asked if there was any new curricula, you said there's nothing new in this budget. I remember that discussion well, and there's nothing new, nothing new to pay for. Now, some of the support that you just mentioned, we never got, at least. I never got. I'll speak for myself, I never got. You're saying that it's 28 days in each school. The PD plan we received, but not the action plan. The presentation you're making now should come before we vote, not after I've made a motion to table it. So this is a little cart before the horse with this being on the agenda. So I do appreciate your explanation, but it should come before it's on the agenda. You also mentioned that you're revising the curricula, revising the grammar, aligning to New Jersey learning standards, and you also mentioned coaching reading specialists. We just hired a reading specialist supervisor who came highly qualified, who expected to be the one coaching, and not the PD person that was hired last December. So if you could explain that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So the first I think I heard was that we said we didn't have any new curriculum, and we...
During the budget, during our budget cycle.
Right, and this is not new curriculum, so maybe I'm not understanding...
You said there's nothing new in the budget, no new curriculum, nothing to worry about, you're not expending any extra funds, but this is new. This is new, this is PD for ELA that you're implementing, as well as the reading specialists, when we just hired a supervisor for the reading specialists. I'm just not understanding what's on the agenda tonight. I feel it's duplicative.
What's on the agenda tonight in numbers items seven and eight? Our professional development for our staff. It's to meet our year-two goals in the area of professional development. It does not mean that there's new curriculum per se. It means that every year, we're looking at our curriculum to make revisions and bring it up to our standard. So we're not developing new curriculum in totality, as in we're getting rid of curriculum and adopting something new. What we do every five years as a part of our cycle, and here in our ELA, is we're considering the feedback we've received from our staff. We're considering the observations that we've made as we go into our classrooms to see what the needs are to support our teachers with greater levels of resources. We've considered what our data has said. We've considered some of the items that we heard last year that needed to be embedded into our curriculum, i.e. the grammar. And so then, as a part of our normal revision process, which is what we do every year with curriculum, and so every year, we have a list, if you will, of curriculum that we revise or we really just take a look at. This is a part of that work.
And this includes the Lucy Hawkins that you mentioned.
And this includes the resources, right, our resources, the units of study.
So this is, okay.
Which is...
So this is the second year of Lucy Hawkins, not the reading specialist.
This is our...
Because you're confused when you mentioned the reading specialist, because the reading specialist is not on the agenda tonight.
Because the reading special...
Yeah, no, so...
You mentioned reading specialist. This PD is not for the reading specialist, because we hired somebody else for the reading specialist.
So let me just interject a couple of things to maybe clarify. So I think, a couple of things. So I think it's pretty well-known that the implementation of Readers Writers Workshop needs to be, we need to wrap our arms around it, we need to ensure that all of our staff are adequately trained, they understand how to do it, and they're all operating from the same level of capacity. What I've heard, not only from teachers, but also from board members, is that this has been kind of an ongoing process that we've never really gotten up to... we've never really gotten up to speed. So I think on a very general overarching macro level, that's the rationale behind the PD that you see on the agenda tonight, is to continue to deliver professional development and learning to staff members so that they can more effectively and authoritatively implement Readers and Writers Workshop. And I believe that that was in the professional development budget that was approved last year. Now, in terms of the reading specialists, so this is nuanced. Presently, the reading specialists perform very traditional, perform in a very traditional kind of orthodox reading specialist role, which is really to deliver multisensory reading intervention to an individual student or small groups of students. And they will continue to do that predominantly. However, as they start to take on small coaching roles and start to build the capacity of classroom teachers to be able to better do that on their own, which in reality, all primary classroom teachers should be able to do. It's not their fault, because typically, they don't get a lot of training in multisensory reading. They don't get OG training, for example. They don't get Wilson training, as a matter of course, in their elementary education degrees. They come into the classroom not really knowing how to do that unless they go back and they get a separate certification. So there's a dearth of capacity amongst our primary teachers to actually be able to deliver multisensory training. So what are we starting to do? We're starting to equip our reading specialists. And yes, we did hire a K-5 literacy supervisor, and she's going to work very hard. But we have seven elementary schools and a lot of elementary teachers, and she's one person. So it's a fairly typical model to turnkey and to build capacity amongst teachers to serve additionally as additional trainers within the building, and practitioners in the classroom whose classrooms teachers can go into actually observe that happening. So I think that's the, is that not only are we going to train the classroom teachers, but we're going to upskill our reading specialists so that as they take on this coaching role, they're more equipped to do that, recognizing, final point, that that's going to be a sliding scale. That's going to be skewed more towards traditional reading specialist behavior initially, but gradually, as our classroom teachers become more independent, that will shift slightly more towards the coaching model, recognizing that that one-on-one reading specialist intervention will never go away completely, because there's always going to be kids that really need that tier-three intervention. So I hope that provides a little bit more clarity on the model and the rationale.
Thank you for that explanation. I just wanted to add on. You've mentioned Wilson training. We've had Wilson training in district. I know we're moving towards, and we've started Orton-Gillingham training. So do we no longer have Wilson? And we just specifically, we only have Orton-Gillingham now?
We have both. Wilson is a part of OG, and so-
Okay.
If I might add, it would be remiss if we did not give the reading specialists the same training that we're giving the classroom teachers with the Readers and Writers Workshop. So we must do that, so that everyone is working off the same script. Our elementary teachers spoke loudly last year about needing the units of study. And so we've provided those, and with that must come the professional development, so that they understand how to implement it efficiently and effectively for each student and for small groups. So thank you.
Thank you.
My issue was not receiving the backup, the sufficient backup and explanation to vote on it tonight. That was my issue. But thank you for your explanation, and Dr. Cascon as well. I might want to add that when I first got on the board, the ELA supervisor who started Readers and Writers Workshop in 2011, who is no longer with us, kudos to her, because eight years later, we're still using the program that she started.
Yeah.
It's a shame we haven't finished the training in eight years.
Okay. Here's my challenge, and I understand, and thank you for the in-depth explanation, and Dr. Cascon as well, the idea that, you know, we provided the units of study last year that have been missing for about five years for elementary school teachers, or in this past year, right? And I understand we need to train the classroom teachers and both kind of upgrade and evolve our training of the reading specialist as they evolve into more coaches, so that they can help to continue to reinforce the PD with the teachers. And I also understand that we moved to, for cost savings purposes and efficiency, moved to bringing trainers inside instead of going out to trainings. That was a great move. I get all that. Here's where there's a little disconnect for me. We do have a new ELA supervisor. I understand she's just recently come on board and look forward to what she can do. Some of this, though, feels out of context for me, because the truth is that while we theoretically have a five-year cycle for curriculum development and approvals, ELA, I've seen changing dramatically and on and off, particularly for K-5 throughout the past few years. And we have struggled with the implementation of the Readers and Writers Workshop, and I understand that this is part of the solution to that, right? I get that. The PD is supposed to address that. At the same time, the board has never really had a presentation of that. The closest that the board had to a presentation of the most recent iteration of K-5 ELA curriculum was when the committee did its report and recommendations. And the challenge with the committee's report and recommendations is that no principals were involved. And I know personally that we had principals who had recommendations to how to better meet their own kids' needs in grammar that weren't listened to. Parents weren't involved. So here, we had the committee presentation with some recommendations. We never actually adopted it, so we've never actually adopted the ELA-K5 curriculum in some time, and we didn't have all the proper inputs for that. So I feel like we're kind of, we're fixing the train while it's moving a little bit. And what would help me as a board member, I would like to consider approving this conditionally so that we can keep things going, but I feel like it's out of context. I've received, and thank you, Dr. Cascon, a packet of data, but I've never received the data analysis presentation, as much as I love data.
You'll overstep.
Okay. So data analysis presentation, so because you're talking about the data that's driving how we address all these nuanced needs and how we address small group learning and all that, right? We need the data presentation. We need a curriculum presentation. We need to actually adopt the curriculum. And we need, I need, still would like to see what happens with the input from the principals and parents with those comprehensive recommendations that the committee came back with. Because without the principal's input and their understanding what's going on with their kids every day, and grammar has been, you know how I feel about that, complete failure in our district. The trying to do, kind of do it organically, and it just hasn't really worked. And this has come from high school teachers, as well as from middle school and elementary school. So I'd like to be able to see these elements. I'm okay with approving this tonight, but conditionally, that we as a board get those things that we're supposed to have, to be able to approve these things in context, i.e. the data, the curriculum, and with all the necessary inputs, including from principals.
On October 7th, you'll have a data presentation, and at the following October meeting, we're doing a curriculum presentation. And so we will be able to provide you with those presentations and updates on our progress in curriculum, moving from what the flow is for curriculum development in the district, to what our curriculum projects are for the 2019-20 school year, to what the professional development is that will accompany that to support our staff. I'd like to just reiterate that professional development is ongoing, and that in all of our best practices, it's very important, I think, to continuously offer ongoing support to teachers in all of our professional development, because each year, the data may look different. Each year, the needs are different, and we need to grow. And so then, as we are moving in our growth model, what was really expeditious and meaningful in year one of implementation of any given model, that might have been, let's say, five or eight years ago, today that looks very differently. Here, what we're seeing, and I appreciate the support on the conditional even, because we can present what we intend to do with this, but the teachers are really needing to have this support, and we want to be able to provide it consistently over time, small, bite-sized chunks that they can take and really make some actionable progress with.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to PD. I just wanted to make sure I had the backup sufficient to vote. But now, the backup and the presentation is happening in the next meeting.
Well, that presentation is curriculum overall. This PD is just a part of our ELA plan.
Yeah, but it's a part of the whole thing. You need a complete presentation.
In the end, it's been, I've placed it on the agenda. It's been put before the board upon my recommendation, having had, you know, extensive conversation with Mr. Mendez over the last couple of months and understanding this PD in the context of the larger plan and the LA initiatives. It's with complete confidence that I make the recommendation, that it's cogent, has a sound rationale, it makes sense.
Ms. Merklinger. So I just have two questions. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we've had several ELA presentations. Okay. So we've gone over the curriculum. We've gone over units of study, what resources were needed. So I feel like we're, to say that we haven't had is not true. To say that we haven't had any updates about ELA, because we have, at least since I've been on the board. I know we've had several conversations. So I just wanted to clarify. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we did have an ELA presentation. So that's my first thing.
Yeah.
My second thing is just to clarify that the funds that are here, that are mentioned in the agenda, that's not an additional taxpayer burden. That's coming out of what we've already budgeted for PD in the budget that we approved in May. So this isn't for anyone taxpayer-wise. From a financial standpoint, this isn't additional funds that we're approving or asking for. It's already in the budget. We're just saying where it's being allocated, basically.
Thank you. In our ELA presentation that we made last year, we stated our year-one, year-two, and I believe even our year-three goals. This was our year-two, and we budgeted for it last year. So yes, this was presented. Yes, it's a part of our year-two. And no, it's not incurring an additional cost. It's something that we had already set aside for this point in the juncture.
Clarification. We had actually three presentations on ELA 612, January, March, and then as part of the joint committee presentation. And we never did roll call vote to adopt anything. Number two, the K-5, because there was a new supervisor coming on board, one, that we're looking to see how the new supervisor impacts things. But two, the only K-5 presentation we've had in about a year was within the context of the curriculum committee presentation, which was a great presentation, but there were still, for me, major question marks. And that committee had not received any input from elementary school principals, who know their building, know their kids, nor from parents, who had some very specific feedback. So just to clarify.
Thank you.
My recollection, if we're talking about the last time there was a curriculum presentation with both, at the time, ELA supervisors involved, along with a bunch of other people, wasn't, I'm sure Julie was on it and another principal as well, right? Wasn't there at least one principal on that?
On the committee work, it was, yeah, it's mixed up. But it's okay. Our year-two was to include, to push out. I think in year one, when you're thinking about curriculum development, you need the people who are teaching the content at the table. And we had, I think, close to 80 teachers sitting at the table across the grade spans. So those PD sessions, those curriculum development sessions, that committee work, that really digging into the curriculum and the standards and looking at our needs, was at an instructional level. I understand the value of the principal. I certainly understand the value of the community members. And as we move forward this year in our work, we will be inclusive of. I think the work that we did last year was really just digging into what's being taught, what are you teaching, how are you wrapping yourself around that, how are you using the data to inform that instruction, and what are we seeing as curricular gaps? And that was really meaningful for the practitioner, the ones who are sitting at that planning table, teaching. So that's where we began. We had all of our teachers participate, well, you know, a large portion of our teachers participate. And where we didn't have them participate, we certainly went out and pushed into the buildings through those representatives to ask for feedback.
Right. Well, I'm not going to beat this to death, but the feedback I had gotten was one that the elementary school principals have not been tapped directly, and they had actually heard back from their teachers about specific needs, including in areas of grammar. And one of the principals I'm talking about is also a reading specialist. So I'm just saying, moving ahead, that's critical information, not just secondary information that we need to tap into and get their feedback. Thank you.
I think I just had one other question, which was, when we approved in January or December, whichever it was, that was then, that PD was then delivered. This is for the next round of PD, right?
Next round, yes. Next level.
And just so you know, part of, I'll be working with Mr. Mendez closely on the presentation for the second meeting in October, and we will be providing very specific information, including board motions to kind of put to rest, once and for all, what curriculum has been board-approved by the board and what hasn't, because admittedly, there's a lot of curriculum. There's a lot that's been reviewed, a lot that's been approved. Now, the extent to which all board members feel is if there's been the necessary level of review, this is certainly subject to discussion. But, you know, whether or not these curriculum actually appear in board motions adopting them, I think it's important for the clarity of all the board. I think it's important for the clarity of the public, since we are making statements relative to whether curriculum were approved or not, that the public has a really clear picture, as reflected in board motions, what curriculum have been reviewed over the course of the last several years. Thank you.
Dr. Cascon, if you can, I'd like to make a suggestion. I know that Mr. Mendez has changed how we get the curriculum review now with your top sheet. Maybe on the top sheet or in another column, you can highlight when the presentation happened, so that when we vote, we know that we're voting today on a presentation that happened last month. So if there's just a little, another column that says, yeah, presented January, whenever.
What I can tell you is absolutely, I mean, listen, we're, you know, I think it's important that we, we're always reflective about our process. I will, I will, I'll tell you honestly, you know, that I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Mendez. She shared the processes that they use, and I have to tell you, I think they're outstanding. From a, you know, from, as a curriculum person who's worked as a curriculum director, I can tell you, I really feel like, now, in terms of, you know, kind of flow and sequencing and chronology, you know, can we get better with that? Yes. But I will tell you what I have seen in those artifacts, and we're going to be working to kind of display those for the public, as well as the board in the second meeting in October. I think the public will see that these are very, very sound internal procedures. Now, if we can work on the point from internal to board, I think that's what you're speaking to.
Yes.
And certainly, we can refine that and get better with our chronology. But I do think we have some excellent procedures in place. I really do.
I think on paper, we do appear to, Dr. Cascon, what we've discovered in past meetings, is that there were elements of that procedure that just were left out. And in terms of, I'm glad you're going to be presenting things for an actual roll call vote. What used to happen is, we'd have a presentation, we'd have a discussion, then the next meeting, we would have it as an attachment, we'd vote on it if there are any final comments. We would have, you know, if there are any final comments, you make it at that time. And so between the two, if there were things that could be, that needed to be changed, altered, whatever, adapted in a different way, phrased a different way, that change could be made. But when I talk about things like principals not having input on something, which should be critical in the process, and when one of the principals is an ELA, is actually a reading specialist, these are things I heard from multiple principals, okay? So that, to me, is a critical part of the process, and the parents, too. When you have multiple parents coming to you over many years saying, my kids can't write with proper grammar, and that's repeated feedback that you hear, elementary, middle school, and high school, and it's not listened to, and it's not really been addressed in the curriculum, just to say, well, we'll pull out grammar lessons, but it doesn't seem to be working. When I go to Kumon in Livingston, I say, do you get a lot of people here from West Orange? Yeah, we get a lot. We find that their grammar is that the kids have a lot of problems with grammar, too. I mean, I've actually gotten this feedback. So I hear you, and I trust you, and I know that you are Mr. Pedagogy, but it has not been ideal.
You know, and I think that, you know, when you look at curriculum, I don't think there's any place in the profession that's got it totally right, because it's challenging, right? Because, you know, curriculum, a written curriculum by its nature is, you know, is constantly changing by virtue of the teachable moment in the classroom. As soon as we put curriculum into a box, into a document, you know, it ceased to be valid, because it's always evolving. And the extent to which what really should be in a curriculum, how detailed should it be? There's some people that think that curriculum really should just be representative of course objectives and assessments, and the means are really differentiated by virtue of that student audience and that teacher's proclivities. So I don't think, really, as a profession, we've actually really figured it out entirely. And so I would agree with you, Mr. Robertson. I think it's, it's an ongoing process of refinement. You know, and I haven't been here long enough to have been in enough classrooms to see what's happening. But my initial impressions are that we're doing a lot of great things. But of course, we can always improve. We can always do better. And, you know, and, you know, we need to be receptive to board feedback. And, you know, and if you feel as if the information's not coming in a timely fashion, if it's not coming in the manner in which you feel you need it in order to exercise authoritative oversight, then yes, that's my job as a superintendent to work with the administration to get it to you in a format, and in a way, and in a chronology that makes you feel comfortable in voting on it. And I promise to work with the administration and make sure that happens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I have one more thing. So for the school business, application for absences. Are any of the principals attending workshop this year? I know last year, when Edison won the bronze certification for future-ready, I believe that principal attended. Will the Kelly principal attend this?
Yes, Dr. Pilar will be in attendance.
Okay, and our registration fee can include up to 20 people, so I'm not sure who else is going. I know in the past, Mr. Segi has gone for the, for sustainability and other classes. I don't know if anyone else is going.
Mr. Santiago is going, because I believe he's.
He usually goes.
Yeah, yeah.
He usually goes for the technology piece and for the future-ready. And I know one year, Deb Cohen of the high school went. Because she presented a program that we have here at the high school, and that was a really proud moment for all of us to see one of our high school teachers in Atlantic City, you know, showing off, but, you know.
I haven't seen, you know, in reviewing all the school business requests, I haven't seen any other folks that have put in for school boards. You know, folks are attending other, you know, leadership trainings and things of that nature. But I don't believe anyone else is going to school boards.
Okay, because the registration.
Includes 20.
20 people.
Interesting.
20 people.
But the hotels aren't free. So we may have free registration, but we still have to pay the hotel.
A hundred bucks.
Right, right.
So there's a motion on the floor to table. Do you wish to withdraw it, or do you want a second?
I will vote based upon the fact that I got sufficient information, and I support the superintendent's recommendation. Yes.
So you withdraw it.
All right. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger.
Yes.
And abstaining for your business?
What's that?
You have to abstain for your business.
Oh, yeah, with the exception of, sorry.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, and I'm abstaining for my line in the business, number three.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes, and I'm abstaining for my four business, and just want to point that out to Mr. Robertson, who alluded that, or intimated, or suggested that I may not be attending workshops. So I just want to call that to his attention. Thank you.
I'm glad you're attending.
Vice President Mordecai?
My vote is yes, and I'm abstaining from workshop.
And President Alper?
Yes, abstaining for my school business item.
All right. Finance, special ser-
Yes. Can we just center up for one second? I'd like to just thank our student liaisons. We're going to actually let them go.
Quickly, can we ask a question for Ms. Mendez over there?
Of course.
As a student who actually participated in the readers writers workshop throughout my elementary school, I found that this workshop actually helped. It was very, like, helped for me as a student, engaging in my reading and writing, and engaging on becoming a better writer. But I originally started out as an ESL learner. How does this, like, professional development for the teachers in literacy encompass ESL students and help them also improve their writing and their reading as much as it helps the normal English-speaking students?
Well, first, congratulations that you are here as a board liaison, and you are articulating with us about instruction in your second language. So that's huge. So congratulations for that. We hope to continue to duplicate in all of our students what you've received from West Orange in our ELA instruction. I think what we're doing in readers and writers workshop is that we're coupling that with the strategies that we're providing in professional development to our teachers who are working with ESL students, and that's called sheltered instruction. So there's two different types of professional development. There's a professional development for the teachers who are working in the readers and writers workshop model. So what does that look like? How do we teach reading? How do we teach writing? How do we do that in a way where we foster independence? As you've demonstrated, right? And then with our teachers who teach students that speak English as a second language, we're offering them different type of PD, and that's sheltered instruction. And that says, well, now, how do we reach the acquisition level of English for those students? How do we work with our ESL population so that they can acquire the academic English that they need, that they can use different strategies in order to reach into the vocabulary of the second language, or leverage their first language, and then transfer those skills, as I'm sure you practice that, right? Leveraging your first language, or whatever grammar, or understanding you had of your first language to learn your second language.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. So I agree with Sanai. And I appreciate the emphasis on involving training. As a student, I think it's important that we're talking about how we can kind of reconstruct the way we teach English, because it's important. But beyond that, I'm also concerned about how we can make our education not just comprehensible, but competitive. And so in today's age, some of the things that some of my peers, we care about, we care about inclusive education, learning diverse perspective, we care about dynamic learning, and things that will really challenge and engage students. So how will this, like, encompass some of these ideas while also measuring this impact? Because some of this is qualitative, like, you can't maybe point to specific numbers. So how can we, you know, gauge towards how this space is being changed for the students?
Yeah. You know, we're really focusing on equity and access. That's listed as a few of our district goals. You'll see that language in three of our goals specifically that were on the board agenda for tonight. So we're thinking about equity. We're thinking about access. So how do we give students access to to quality education, to quality engagement with content, and with the strategies and the resources that the students need individually, so that they can all attain that curriculum at a high level? Today, as a part of that initiative, today, a group of five, a group of administrators, including myself, five of us, began to attend training with Rutgers. It's called RISA. And it's really looking at developing equitable and sustainable systems of learning. I think we're at the beginning of that work as a group, as a core, as a unit. But in today's training, for example, we really talked about the fact that equity is not something only that students need to access, but our teachers need to have equitable access into professional development, into professional learning. So when we're thinking about our system, we're thinking about it from all of the aspects. For our students, how do they have equity? How do they have access? Our staff, how do they have equitable access to training and resources? To our content and our curriculum, how do we make sure that that's supporting the students based on their needs? Because equity doesn't mean same, right? So I may need more than you. So are those resources available for me from my curriculum, from my text, and from the instruction that I get from my teacher, right? And then systems as a whole. So today, we kind of began to unpack that. So what exists in our systems that really go contra, or go against all of our students accessing opportunities and succeeding in those opportunities? So something, for example, we talked about today was criteria. Here's the very controversial, right, but criteria for honors and gifted programs, right? Is that criteria designed in a way to really honor and see which students are able to keep up with academic rigor, or is criteria set up in a way that it keeps certain students out, right? So what is our system doing? What rules, if you will, is it putting in place that could, whether intentionally or not, keep students out of accessing high-level quality experiences in their educational system, that really have a lot to do with the expectations that we set? Because when we set really good, high expectations for our students, you know, as we see in our 90, 90, 90 schools, 90% of the time, even with our 90% economically disadvantaged, even with our 90% students with difficult situations or social, emotional areas that impact their lives, 90% of them can still excel above, right? They can still exceed. So I think it's how we approach that. And I think as a district, that's our priority. We're making sure that all of our students have access. Every group, every represented group here, needs to have access to high-quality education, and then we need to measure that. And so as you're saying, qualitatively, absolutely. Because not all of this is going to come from data, right? Not, at least not the hard number data. It's going to come from their experiences. It's going to come from their conversations. It's going to come from overcoming, right? The obstacles that life presents, and we're able to bring down what we call affect, so that I can learn, right? So that I can learn, so that I can come to school and engage, engage with the content, engage with my peers, engage with my teachers in a meaningful way, so that I become all that I am. I'm productive in all that I am, and potential is drawn out at the student's highest level.
Thank you.
Thank you, again. To, you're showing your chops, and the reason why you're here. Those were two outstanding questions, outstanding. And really cut to the heart of things, in particular Darlene, both questions. Darlene's question, I mean, it really is the question that we as educators are thinking about every day that's driving us. It's the heart of the matter. You know, because it's so complex, I've been kind of boiling it down to three things for our staff. One is data. So let data be a roadmap for us in setting our targets. Two, creating an environment where all students are, feel welcome, safe, empowered, and where their voices are heard and mattered. And the same thing for staff. An environment where all staff feel safe, feel welcome, feel empowered, and have the tools they need to do the job. So I'm boiling it down to those three things, and I think if we have those three things present, we're going to accomplish it. But wonderfully said, Mr. Mendez, and I'm glad it was a good experience today at RISA. I know you represented us well. Folks, thanks so much. I know you probably have homework to do, so we appreciate it. Have a safe trip home and look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And thanks to Ms. Connors.
Yes, I was going to say.
She was awesome.
All right. Moving on, finance, special services one through five, and business office items one through 11. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion other than my own? Mr. Calavano, on item two in special services, the tuition extraordinary services adjustments, I had in the back of my head that there was a three-year limit on those, and not four. Am I just mistaken on that?
You're right. But the 2015-16 one, we actually were fighting to see who was responsible for a payment. And then we got the determination that it's our responsibility, so that's why it's here.
The remainder of my discussion on this would be my usual semi-regular diatribe that the state of New Jersey, in its infinite wisdom, allows out-of-district providers to retroactively decide that the cost of a school year for an out-of-district place student was more than they said it was at the time, and they can do that for up to three years. And they're doing that to us here for a grand total of $28,000 and change. So it's like highlighting that when I see it. Any other discussion?
Yes. I'd like to say both congratulations and thanks to our music boosters. You know, well, that's under finance, business office, seven? They've donated, it took them six years to raise the money for the band trailer. Six years. It's not only, and they raised, essentially donated $29,500 to the school system. All right? That saved us money and empowered the band to do more. And those parents have been working on the build-out of the inside of the band, carpenters, handyman, and electricians, and just anybody who could do anything, have been working on the build-out of the trailer, you know, every evening for several weeks. And they've also, people may not realize that they also built the special effects, the special effects lighting of the cauldron. And I watched them, as I took Joelle to see Coach Cheryl for cheerleading, watched them daily, from building this from scratch. And you had a computer, you had a computer science engineer, and an electrician, and somebody else, and they were literally started with a metal husk, and it turned into this elaborately-designed cauldron with with the, you know, the smoke effects and special lighting and all that, and it was just really beautiful. And so I just want to say, well done to the pit crew. That is, those parents who, on an ongoing basis, are dedicating themselves to this effort, and they're the ones, every game and every competition, are helping the students carry the equipment back and forth and set it up. Amazing, amazing parents, amazing kids, amazing family effort, and amazing teachers. The bandleaders are just, wow. That's all I can say is, wow.
Any other discussion? All right then. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Up next, miscellaneous items one and two for district goals and board goals. Do we want to break those out? Do we want to, do we need to read those? What's the process on those?
We've read them in the past.
We've read them in the past. We've read them out loud. I think we can approve number one, and then I should read number four, just because it's not of the board. So let's do number one on its own for district goals. Do we have a motion for those?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Yes. Any discussion on district goals?
Just happy to see that we're moving forward after much discussion in our workshops with both Charlene and without Charlene, our New Jersey school board's representative. Glad to see that we are including equity and mindfulness, and all the good things we've been talking to death for years. So finally, so that's good.
All right.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And on item two, the board goals, I just wanted to be able to read the fourth one, because it's not on the agenda, which is to continue to participate in both individual and group professional development through attendance, both at board workshops with our NJ SBA field representative, and off-site NJ SBA trainings, and to work to maintain NJ SBA board certification. So with that, may I have a motion for our board goals, which are now numbered one through four?
Mr. Alper?
Yeah.
Would you talk a little bit about board certification?
We're going to save that for board reports, but we can do that now. We can. So, in fact, Sandra, would you like to cover that? Because it's your.
Sure, sure. So board professional development, every year, there is one mandatory course, Governance 1. Next year, Governance 2, 3. And the year that you're re-elected, whether it's your fourth year, or your seventh year, or your eighth year, you do Governance 4 again, every reelection year. And so this last week, during the Essex County School Boards Association meeting, the West Orange Board of Ed received their certification for the third time. I'm not quite sure if it's the master certification or the regular certification, so that we will, that will clarify at a, no, I mean, in the past, because we've gotten it three times before, 2005, 2016, and now last week. So it's been such a long while since 2005, and even 2016, that I don't remember what kind we got. But this is the third time our entire board has been certified. So congratulations to my colleagues for working hard and attending workshops together and individually, and making sure we do the work that's necessary to maintain to maintain and increase our knowledge. As, as Dr. Cascone said earlier, education continuously evolves, and there's something new that we learn pretty much every day. So this is good. This will help us make sure that we are more informed when we make a decision.
It's, I think it's 16 hours of training over four years, and it has to, as,
Yes.
it has to be maintained over time, with another 10 units of training.
Then you'll get the master.
Year and a half, we can get the master, which will be.
And they actually changed that. It used to be 28 credits for the master, and they downgraded it to 26. And for the individual training, they added a quiz. They didn't always have the quiz. You just had to get 20 credits, and then 40, and then. You just had to get 20 credits, and then 40, and then 60.
So, you know, there's significant research out there that shows that boards that learn together are more effective, and more effective boards have a positive effect on student achievement, and that's the job, so it's a really good thing for us.
It's a good thing.
So I'm glad that we can include them in the board goals to keep that up.
Yeah, I remember, my few years into the board is when the HIV came into effect. So we definitely had to get board training that year, because we didn't know what HIV was back then. So it's something to do every year, and as often as you can, and not just the mandated governance training for HIV.
Right. And I'd like to, you know, the trainings are really quite extensive and sophisticated, from sunshine law training, to salary guide training, to, I mean, to sustainability. And we, you know, we've really dedicated quite a few hours, both individually and together as a board, to go through that process, as well as doing board goals, which are not mandated, as well as doing board self-evaluation, which used to be mandated by law and is not now, but we've went through the process.
But it's good practice.
So congratulations.
And I believe negotiations, as you just mentioned, is what Ms. Triggs Scales is actually going to take in a few weeks.
Good. Excellent.
And sustainability.
And sustainability is excellent.
And social, emotional learning.
That's excellent, yeah.
Mr. Alper and Ms. Mendez and I took negotiations earlier this year, the ready-set bargain training.
Yeah, I've taken that.
And we're in the midst of that now, so it's very necessary.
All right. So, let's move this.
All right.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Public comment. If you have anything to say, come on up, you'll have three minutes, let us know your name and address. And you have three minutes on the clock, which I already said.
Hello, I'm Susan Mackey, Two Mountain Way. I understand that there's a new food policy regarding parents bringing in food into the building, and, but I've heard different versions from different people, like, we can't have bake sales, we can't have pretzel sales, but is it just inside? Oh, we can have, we have bake sales outside, but maybe not? And a whole bunch of things, like, does that affect us? Like, for the Halloween party, can we have food there? If it's, can we buy food from the cafeteria and bring that to the party? So I have a lot of, you know, I'm not on the executive board, so I guess I didn't get the memo. I just know that there's a lot of changes that way that affect what I need to do for my kids and for my school this year, and I just would like the whole policy, so I could understand. Like, I know that the football games, I think it's parents provide the food there. How does it all work? That's all I wanted to know, is what's allowed in the school? Why has it changed? And what do we do going forward? Just so that I know I'm doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper, would you mind?
No, not at all.
Thank you so much for coming up to speak about that, and I appreciate it. I think it speaks to the need for me to put out some form of a correspondence to the parents. You know, we've had some, you know, some activism of late from, you know, our parents of students with life-threatening allergies. We've had some really productive meetings with representatives of that group. It's really kind of, I think, raised the level of awareness of a need to really develop an allergy management plan, a board of education policy and corresponding regulations is really the plan. So, you know, in the absence of that to date, and we are moving expeditiously on getting that passed, this has been my recommendation to principals. We need to be aware, very aware, of the students in our buildings who have these life-threatening allergies and what those are. We need to ensure that all staff members that work with those students, we need, are aware of that. We need to make sure that all the parents of children who are in those classrooms, obviously discreetly, not identifying the student, are aware of that. What I have recommended for bake sales is that, that as principals, that you bring in representatives of parents who have students with life-threatening allergies, and have an inclusive collaborative conversation with those parents. Because those parents don't want to bring about changes that are going to really put a crimp in other folks', you know, students' lifestyle, and be party poopers, so to speak. They just want to ensure and feel comfortable that their students and their children are safe. So bring parents in, have an inclusive conversation with them, say, hey, listen, we'd like to do a bake sale, we'd love to actually be able to have homemade baked goods. How could we do that and ensure that you're comfortable and that your kids are safe? So one example would be to make sure that the ingredients, you know, at a bake scale are very clearly listed, that, you know, that if you have ingredients that may have allergens in them, that you don't have cross-contamination. So this is something we're really focusing on. I think in the interim, what I've asked principals to do is follow protocol that's been used, but use your judgment and really enfranchise these parents who are coming that from perspective into the conversation. And I tell you, they will give you a lot of information and they'll help you guide through it. But it's not our intention to kind of shut everything down, but rather just to really make sure that these students are safe and are not put into situations where they're going to be in harm's way. But more clarity forthcoming, and I will be putting out a correspondence to parents to give them a little bit of information on that. So thank you so much.
Is there anyone further for public comment? All right. Seeing none. Yeah, I mean, that sounds completely reasonable. I would be, you know, very concerned if we were losing, you know, things like bake sales, holiday parties, and, you know, like the International Food Days, where families, you know, cook at-home foods from their countries of origin and bring them in, and, you know, it's a big thing some schools do. So hopefully that can be worked out, and the conversations can be had quickly, and we don't find that, you know, people are missing out on bake sales and everything else, because that wouldn't be great.
And I'm glad to note that I am meeting with the elementary principals, which is really the group for which this is really relevant. I'm meeting with them tomorrow, and this is an item on the agenda, so I think I can provide some clarity where there isn't kind of a knee-jerk and extremist reaction, as might be the case in some buildings, but that we're just being judicious and measured in how we approach it.
All right. Board member reports. Ms. Triggs Scales?
Well, good evening again, everyone. And so, I think this is the 14th day of school. Does that sound about right? And the 11th week that we've had, Dr. Cascon is our superintendent. I think that's about right. I think, I think, but who's counting? And I just think it's wonderful. I mean, his exuberance is catching. Your expertise is welcomed, and you're managing 12 schools, central office staff, 7,000 students, 100-plus staff, and a host of requests from your board. I'm just so impressed with the communications, and the morale seems to be rising, and the confidence and trust seem evident. And so, I'm just happy you're here, and I think this marriage is off to a very good start, and we hope the honeymoon lasts a very long time. And I should have said this when the liaisons were here, but our young people are precious, precious jewels. Aside from being our future, and we want to educate them well, because they'll also be our caretakers. What happened on Friday with the global climate strike around the world was just amazing, with this 16-year-old Swedish young lady, Greta Thirburn. And we had a group here from West Orange who participated as well. And just so heartwarming to see that kids are making a difference. We adults, in so many ways, have messed things up, and it's going to take these bright, intuitive young people to straighten it out for us, and for them, and for our future. And saving our environment is really, really important, and that's kind of a segue. I've been participating lately with our Green West Orange, because I've become a tree hugger. I guess I've always been a tree hugger, but I'm really a tree hugger now, since my trees were affected. But there's going to be a Raway River cleanup, and it's going to run from the high school, the Degnan Park, Vincent's Pond, I didn't know that was the name of the pond, Vincent's Pond, all the way out to McLunes. And they will be asking our high school students to participate in the cleanup. And I just think that's such a wonderful thing, that it's going to be a community event. And so, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. It's coming up soon. And then I went to the pedestrian safety committee from Ms. Mordecai. And they talked about, new stop signs have gone up all around our schools. I've noticed them in my neighborhood, near the high school. And there's also going to be a bike rodeo this Wednesday, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Washington School, and it's all about safe bike skills. So if you have little ones who are just learning, or who need a refresher on how to give hand signals and all that kind of stuff, they can show up at Washington School on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Mordecai?
See, when Dr. Cascon and I went to that meeting, we didn't have any bike rodeos, we didn't have the fun stuff. But I'm, we're very jealous. I am looking forward to that Raway River cleanup, and that would be something the Sustainability Committee would have been involved with, with the Environmental Commission of the town, as...
You're saying what, what it was?
Oh, it didn't happen yet, it's coming.
Okay.
And also our Fight for Green Club at the high school, and the many environmental clubs that we have throughout the district. That would be something great for them to take home. I guess my board report is, on Saturday, I attended New Jersey School Boards Association, County Association Leadership Meeting, and it was my last meeting, so it was bittersweet. Nobody knew it was my last meeting, including me, because they decided to not have a November meeting. So it was great to have 21 counties represented this past Saturday in Trenton, and they talked a lot about, actually, they had the same visitors we had from, just before school started, Dr. Heindl, as well as Liz Warner, talking about social, emotional learning, and really pushing that forward statewide. So that was a great place for them to be, because they had 21 counties represented there. And I'm looking forward to us as a district hosting them with the school's support network and everything else that they're doing, because that would be beneficial to all our faculty and staff. And that's it for me.
All right.
Easy weekend.
Mr. Robertson?
Lots of driving.
First, I just want to say, as Ms. Triggs Scales pointed out, Dr. Cascon, you made an immediate difference. I just want to thank you for that exuberance, for that just constant stream of positivism, great communication, and you have already made a difference in morale as well. And just want to thank you for being off to a great start. I know it's taken a lot of hard work. It's like drinking water from a fire hose, I know. The Nikhil, the walk-run for Nikhil was another wonderful, both celebration of our community and reminder of traffic safety and not, and driving without being distracted. And I was, I was, I of course did the, I did the walk part, not the run, although my son Jared came back, he said, you know, he wanted to do the run again, and he was bummed he came in. Second last year, he came in third this year, so it's like, I said, you're getting older. So he didn't like that, but it was a lot of fun. It was just, it's one of the events, I think, that really pulls everybody in the community together, regardless of anything. It's just nothing but warmth and love, and it's a beautiful event. I want to, you know, thank Sangita and Sunil, it's always wonderful. Had attended Liberty Back to School Night, where I saw Dr. Cascon, and for us, it was our, you know, Joelle's eighth grade now, it's her second time around at Liberty, and we feel lucky that she got a couple of the teachers that we loved before, when Jared was there, with Mr. DeJesus and Ms. Patel. Mr. DeJesus is an amazing science teacher, Ms. Patel, great math teacher, who also, by the way, speaks six languages. Yeah, she's just kind of brilliant. And Ms. Yu came back for Chinese, and, but also met some, just, I just was blown away by the outstanding talent among the teachers, and from Dr. Gaudio, to always Mr. Sanfi and Mr. Music himself, and Ms. Horowitz, and it was just a wonderful experience. And what else? Guidance, I had a couple of questions on a few things. Oh, the, were you going to talk about the Essex County, you talked about the certification, were you going to talk about the safety panel?
If you'd like.
Okay. Well, they had a, they had an amazing safety and security panel at the Essex County School Board Association meeting, where we got the training certification. The good news is that, you know, we were doing a lot of things right already, or certainly begun with the security audit. There are other resources that we can look into that are free. Lou Camerata, Special Investigator, Regional Planner, and Representative on Preparedness and Emergency Planning. He, you know, he and his team will come out and do trainings for us, and they do, you know, trainings and credentials and all sorts of things, and certifications, ongoing certifications for a variety of areas. And they also do have some grants available, but they provide a host of free services. So I'll pass along his contact information to you. There's also Valerie Wilson, the BA, overseeing a billion-dollar budget for New York City Public Schools, and she's always just pretty incredible. She was talking about how, when we think of planning for specific crises, they have students, some students who are in crisis every day, whether it's with PTSD and varieties of needs, and the types of things that they have to implement to make sure they're meeting daily needs. And then when the water crisis first hit New York City Public Schools, how they literally overnight were able to get bottled waters in the thousands into all the schools, after getting, she gets a call at midnight. And, you know, it was really wonderful to hear the different stories. And Dave Rubin, Director of Safety Services for Belleville. I'm not going to go into detail, I'll send you some notes later, but there were some things that others were doing more of, or doing that we may not be doing, or should possibly look at, as well as the free services and support that Lou Camerata talked about. But it was a very informative experience, it was a great discussion panel, and all-around good event. Sorry? Okay. And just had a couple of quick, yes, yes.
In addition, Officer Ed was there from the West Orange Police Department.
Oh, duh!
Our SRO.
Absolutely, our SRO was there. He was there live, and that was wonderful, that we had that active participation.
And we were the only district with our SRO officer there, so that was awesome.
That was awesome. That was awesome. Couple of quick questions on some, just follow-up on some things. And Ms. Mordecai, I think, brought this up as well, and you sent us some information, kind of updating on the guidance audit, but that's something we should have a larger discussion about. That was a major kind of turnaround point for guidance and addressing, and it'd be good to know more about how we're expanding those efforts in more detail for K8, because that was where the big challenge was, or K5 especially, where there really wasn't a guidance presence, especially since one of your focuses, and something that's dear to my heart, is early career development, early college exploration, as well as looking at how they met the needs that were identified in the survey, because parents provided a wealth of information. And that's been an area that's been very important to me over the past few years, because initially I had brought forth letters from parents on very specific things. And I'd like to know also more about the training they're getting to better meet the needs of, for college applications, because we found that some had more experience, or some were better trained than other guidance counselors, and kids were getting a variety of direction, and not always what they needed. Our guidance counselors are very dedicated, very loving, and overall great, but, you know, we're in continuous improvement, front mindset, so we can always, always do better, especially when we're helping to direct kids' lives. I'm sorry? Did you want to make, okay. The other question I was going to ask about had to do with when we can, right before graduation, and, you know, my son graduated this year, I had received kind of anecdotal reports. We knew that our graduation rate was the best ever, 91.5%, but I'd received anecdotal reports about our college attendance rates increasing for two-year, four-year, and in total. And it would be great to see the actual data, as well as get that final list, I got the app, I got the acceptance list, but not the actual attendance list. Be great to actually see that and the data, and to then also look at how we're doing in terms of, from both a gender and ethnicity standpoint. One of the positives over the past few years is that girls were taking a lead role in winning many of the science and math awards, particularly last year and the year before, but still holding their own this year. And that was, so where a lot of districts struggle with girls, our girls were excelling. with girls, our girls were excelling, including Sinai's sister, and, you know, and now I'm wondering, you know, how are our boys doing, particularly boys of color? And it would be great to, maybe step one is just get the data as to how we did, because that's also a PR story that we can put out there, good news story, and then second is getting the data as to how we're doing from an equity standpoint, equity and access standpoint, so, which I know that you're pulling together gradually, but if we get that first part soon, that'd be great.
Yeah, I owe you, I've only provided a sketch of the college information forthcoming this week.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I got your inquiry, and more details coming, and I owe you an attachment, which I left off the last report, so.
Wonderful.
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail, wonderful, you're good for it, I know, it's all right. Thank you.
Ms. Merklinger?
So I just want to echo my peers, Scott, I think you've been a great addition, and definitely love the positivity that you've been bringing to West Orange and our school districts. You know, I was up at the high school on Thursday night, and I just took a moment to just look around, and there were so many students, so many kids just from the community engaged in some sort of activity, it was just a great thing to see, we had girls soccer, the boys soccer team was warming up, we had football going on, baseball, tennis, I mean, the entire football was practicing, we had cheerleaders up there, I mean, it was just massive numbers of people, but everyone was just working together, everyone sharing the fields, using the facilities, so it was just a great thing to see West Orange High being used in that capacity by the community, so definitely want to just point out, if you aren't on social media, to check out the West Orange Instagram, Facebook pages, we've been flooding, or it's been flooded with just so many different and amazing events that our schools, our teachers, and students are doing, between car washes, athletic events, the marching band, just so many things that are going on, it's so great to see, and there's way too many to put into one little report, but just, you know, if you haven't gotten out there or checked out social media, definitely check out our West Orange pages, there's a lot going on. The CJ Morgan Golf Outing is Monday, so if you aren't registered to join, I'm sure you can still join in, they're always looking for folks. We have our back-to-school nights, the high school one is this Thursday, there's no school on Monday, and I believe, and on the October 1st and 9th, but one thing I just wanted to point out real quick, something that's near and dear to my heart, is the, and I really appreciate the girls volleyball team is holding, with their games from around 4:00, a suicide prevention awareness, it's dedicated to suicide prevention awareness, and so the more folks that can come out to support that, that would be great, so, really appreciate it. Tomorrow.
Okay. Oh, the girls volleyball, I've got a Girl Scout meeting, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it's tough to be in a lot of places, we have so many things going on, I find myself Saturday, I was running around all over West Orange between different sporting events, and same thing on Sunday, so, you know, there's just so many events, which is great, it's just hard to be all in one place, every place at one time, so.
There's been a ton. Dr. Cascon and I, and I obviously echo everyone else on your presence, but Dr. Cascon and I hit a bunch of them this Saturday and Sunday, to Saturday, I guess, we were at the Gregory Car Wash, although separately, we were at the Hazel Carnival, we were at the other thing, but what I wanted to talk about was, and you probably can't tell at this point a week later, sadly, but Saturday, the 14th, I guess it was, we both had our head shaved for childhood cancer research at St. Baldric's at the Shalali, together between the two of us, we raised just under $1,600, which is good, but I want to give a shout-out to a teacher in the district, Meredith Schwartz, who also had her head shaved, which is obviously a much bigger commitment than us relatively bald guys to begin with.
Definitely.
She has raised just over $8,000, which is incredible, so.
Very nice.
Hats and hair off to her. And that's all I've got, next board meeting will be right here, go ahead.
I just want to note that there is a Love and Unity Concert Saturday at Ospac, I think it's from 12 to 6, and our students are participating, the Asian Club, the African Heritage Club, and the Unity Club, and it's a free event, and lots of different music, and vendors, so come on out and do another We Are West Orange thing.
All right.
I have to say that I attended the St. Baldric event, and I won't tell you that they both cried, but I was crying watching them get their head shaved, saying, no, not me, but their hair grew right back.
I think you guys look good that way.
Within a couple days, their hair grew back.
You know, it's...
I'm pretty happy with it.
Shades of difference, it's okay.
But I will, I will add my, or the life vest for Dr. Cascon, so, thank you.
Can I add one?
Good so far.
One more shout-out, or, it's Saturday night, if you happen to be watching the Mets game, look out for our West Orange cheerleaders. They will be performing at City Field in the... They do a dance and cheer night, and so our West Orange students, who range from ages 6 to 14, will be performing.
Wow.
Coach Cheryl has been working them out.
Very nice.
She's been working them hard.
Fantastic, all right, we'll see you here 8:00 PM, October 7th, we're adjourned.
Thank you.